The December eighth panel city planning board meetings now in order, please take role.
Board member Stamps.
Here.
Board member Barker.
Here.
Board member Rich.
Here.
Chairman Dubauer.
Here. Are there any changes or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that the board table the item six B concerning the yacht, major development approval for the yacht club. Item six B was noticed as a major development. Notice was proper. It was posted on the city's website and on the property in accordance with the land development code. But this morning, staff have received several comments and requests from nearby property owners. Tabling the item would give us the opportunity to facilitate a meeting between the nearby property owners and the yacht club and time to address the concerns raised by those neighbors. I don't know if you want to talk about it during the actual item, but I did want to mention that before we got into the agenda.
A slight refinement to that would be to that that will be the recommendation to table it, however, individuals are here. And so I believe, we believe it'd be appropriate to go ahead and take evidence and testimony and to hear all the issues and to get educated. But then we just wanted you to know at the beginning of the meeting that our recommendation would be after you, you know, hear everything that to ultimately table it until end next year.
Right. How about when we have the item on the agenda, will the applicant agree to table it and we'll go from there? Does that work?
Yeah, well, you can ask, when we get to that item, obviously, the applicant will will appear, will make a presentation. You can ask the applicant what what they think about that as far, but once again, that's just a recommendation coming from me and Mr. Fuller, staff.
Sounds good.
Address it when we get to that item.
So no action required at this time, just a heads up.
Any other changes or additions? Thank you. All right, any announcements or disclosures by board members?
I spoke to Mr. Nguyen earlier today about a different business topic that we did briefly touch on, that there was a meeting today, so.
I got a phone call.
Okay, I'll disclose that I'm currently the vice commodore of the St. Andrew Yacht Club. And as you guys see in your packet, Birkenblue, wrote a letter that allows yacht club members to participate based on their findings.
I received a phone call, I did not answer, but I'm a member of the yacht club.
Okay, thank you. All right, approval of the minutes for the November tenth meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Have a motion, second, please take role.
Board member Stamps.
Yes.
Board member Barker.
Yes.
Board member Rich.
Yes.
Chairman Dubauer.
Yes. I'll now read the process for quasi judicial proceedings. Step one, public hearing announced, introduction of application by staff. Step two, ex party communication disclosure by board members. Step three, identification of applicant and affected parties that intend to participate in the hearing. Affected parties that only tend to make a statement may do so at the public participation part of the agenda. An affected party means any person or entity that will suffer an adverse effect to an interest protected or furthered by the ELDC, including interests related to health and safety, police and fire protection, service systems, densities or intensity of development, transportation facilities, healthcare facilities, equipment or services, and environmental or natural resources. Will adverse interests may be shared in common with other members of the community at large, but must exceed and agree the general interest in community good shared by all persons. Now turn it over to counsel for swearing any witnesses.
If you have any intention, if I have planning commission members come and not come, but stand and be sworn, anybody that's here that intends on speaking on any of the items today will just swear you all in at once. If for some reason you feel you would like to speak even though you didn't stand up and were sworn, that's okay. You just, we can swear you in at the time that you come before the meeting. So anyone that intends on presenting evidence or speaking on any of the items today, if you can stand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll again request letter A.
Item six A is case number CPC PLN twenty twenty six zero zero nine five. It is a variance. It is a request to vary from the side setback regulations established by section one oh four thirty six point three of the N O five land development code establishing the regulations for neighborhood residential or NR zoning. The subject parcel is located at ten thirteen East Seventh Court. Essentially, the applicant would like to split the two, this this lot. So the subject parcel ten thirteen East Seventh Court is right, there's there's two structures on the parcel. So the other structure is ten fifteen East Seventh Court. So the other one is actually dealing with code enforcement issues. So the goal is to bring the whole site into compliance so it can be split in order for it to for the applicant to make necessary upgrades to the adjacent structure. So so staff is recommending approval on this. Essentially, the goal is to bring, again, the whole site into compliance, but in order to do that, they they do need a variance from the side setback regulation.
Thank you. Any questions for on board for staff?
Is that on the east side of the property where the variance would take place?
It would be on the, it's an existing setback of one foot, so that would be the, yes, the the west.
The west side?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And that's for an existing structure.
Yes, all of these, yes, that's the main issue, they're all existing. So there, of course, we're not going to be able to tear it down and reposition it in order for it to satisfy with the new neighborhood plan zoning district. So in order for it to be split, we can't split it and cause more nonconformities. So the goal is to have the variance and then bring it into compliance to the variance review process.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here to speak on this item?
Yes.
Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and whether you've been sworn in.
Ms. Eddie Davis McCray. And mainly, like she stated, we're trying to split it, we're trying to ten fifteen from ten thirteen. And ten thirteen was built in like nineteen forty. And when we tried to do the split, you know, that's when they told us it was severance. I guess it's supposed to be like five feet between the property line, and it wasn't five feet.
Questions for board for the applicant? Thank you.
Correct, thank you.
Is there any else here to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name and address and whether you've been sworn in.
Good afternoon, I'm Shirley Robinson. I am a neighbor across the street of forty years. My question is not so much as what they do with their land per se. My question is going to hinge on what will happen to future lands. For example, a military owner has a large lot next to me. So once we allow one property owner to change its variance, and I do understand there are existing structures on that land, but since Glenwood has been cut and sliced, as you know, into mini barrels so that they can get new housing, my concern of forty year tenants that this large structures is next to me with a variance change can be hacked up and three or four houses can be put, what was should have been one or two. Currently, on that issue, we have a sewer house or plant on Seventh Court that is older than I am, and I'm in my seventies. So I know it doesn't hold what's there already. I'm concerned about the future. I'm concerned about what's going to happen to the larger lots with one owner who now has a variance but can come in and says, you let A and B did it, so why can't we go four lots rather than two lots? We don't have the parking. The unfortunately, the emergency vehicles because of the width of the street, we've almost had houses to burn down, one in front of me, because they can't get through to where they need to be. And I live in that curve on Watson Bayo. And so I've seen it all in forty years. And what I haven't seen is the infrastructure change enough to support that, for example, within the last ten years, the neighbor across the street could not bathe and have a washing machine going at one time because the water pressure itself didn't support it. However, praise God to the city, they set a fire hydrant there to mandate that we get the water pressure that we need, but I lived there thirty years with no water pressure per se in that sense. So my concern is not so much as that I don't want them to do whatever they want to do with their land, but once you open that door that you can do it, then how do you close that door that they can't do it?
Any other varies would have to come to this board to be approved, though if staff wants to, council wants to add anything to that or yield to them?
That's correct. So in terms of variances, there is a process. So if if you have an, any property owner within three hundred feet of the variance would be notified, just like you were notified here. So that is the process, is that they would have to submit a formal application to the development services department. Staff would review it, write a report, just like you see here, and that request would have to come before that, before this body for consideration.
And that's good to know, and I'm glad that's in place. My experience with the city, a retiree from the city as well, has been a resident there. It's good to see familiar faces, but in the blink of an eye, the whole landscape of who's here in charge can change. So I do understand what you're saying. Any new requests will have to meet with new requirements, but I'm still concerned about the fact that we've got larger lots in Glenwood, that we are attempting to make a neighborhood and keep a neighborhood that's going to be split up into pieces where traffic, emergency vehicles, low water pressure, sewer availability, all of these things are still in existence, even though we are building house after house.
And I can provide some additional insight, so not to go too too far into the weeds, but what what you are referring to and what you're getting into is really development review. And so when you have these proposed developments, when people want to subdivide land, and people do have the right, of course, to submit, to request that, they do have to go through a process. So this is one aspect of of development review is is a variance. But they also have to receive, they have to receive approval for that for that development. And in that review, staff has to review for water, for sewer, for traffic. So if we're talking about dividing up land and whether it be two, three, four lots, whatever the case may may be, all of that information has to be taken into consideration during the review process, particularly if you're talking about a larger lot, they they'll obviously want to carve it out into more pieces. So just remember, the more lots that you are requesting, there there are standards for review that that have to be met per per our code in this city. So but again, if if you want to reach out or learn more about it, we're here, we're available to provide additional insight. But there is a process for development review regarding subdivision of land.
Okay, thank you. And I have reached out and I have attended the the development meeting, so it is good, and I'm glad you have that. And I'm just going to presume that from what all we've discussed, you're basically saying each case.
Correct.
Each each request is going to have to have a new set of eyes, or at least a same set of eyes, to govern it by the laws that are on the books now.
Correct. So it is a case by case basis, because not all lots are the same and not all locations are the same. So each 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 request will have to be reviewed based on what they're asking for and the amount of lots that they're asking for as well. So all of that has to be considered.
Well, I, and I thank you for that.
Absolutely.
I know it doesn't resolve. I mean, my concerns and only the time will tell that, but we're going to be hopeful that as the future progresses, that we don't have the community per se start looking like just basically quickly develop homes in very small lots. But thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
Any additional questions?
Well, please, we have to record this, so if you, if there's anything else you want to say, please come to the microphone. Could you restate your name and address for the record?
My name?
Name and address for the record.
Ms. Eddie Davis McCray, but I do not live in Panama City, so.
Oh, it doesn't, address is fine.
Sixty nine forty six Pomelo Drive, West Hills, California.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to know whether or not it was any additional questions for me? Because on the lot right now, it's already two buildings, so we would not be adding just renovation.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Is anyone else here to speak on this? See none, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion, second, please take role.
Board member Stamps.
Yes.
Board member Barker.
Yes.
Board member Rich.
Yes.
Chairman Dubauer.
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you. Request letter B.
Item B is case number CPC PLN twenty twenty six zero one seven six. The application is a major development. The request is under the provision that any development activity that is not subject to less than minor or minor development review must request request major development approval. The owner of the property is St. Andrew Bay Yacht Club. The applicant is Robert Carroll, and the address of the parcel is two one eight Bunkers Cove Road.
Thank you. So staff and council has recommended we table this item to the next meeting. Is the applicant here? We, I feel like we need to hear from the applicant to confirm that. Well, let's see if it's.
Yeah, and our recommendation was to hear any any evidence or testimony.
I don't know if I need to wait for y'all to swear manor again or not. I was sworn in, I didn't know if I.
Oh, if you've been sworn in once.
Well, again, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Michael Nguyen. I'm appearing here before you all in my capacity as commodore of the St. Andrews Bay Yacht Club. As was indicated previously by Mr. Zimmerman and by Mr. Fuller, we became aware today that there were some well taking concerns which have been raised regarding portions of this proceeding in the best interest of, I believe, the yacht club, of time and efficiency, and for making sure that this is handled appropriately internally within the yacht club as well. I do believe that it's important to accept the proffer of continuance as made by Mr. Fuller. Again, we do not oppose the motion to continue that I believe was presented to you all by third third party counsel today. And I think what would be in the best interest of everyone would be for this to be continued to a later hearing, perhaps in January. From a practical standpoint, when we became aware of this issue, we reached out to as many parties as we could to notify them that it was our intention to not oppose the continuance. As such, Mr. Robert Carroll was told that he did not need to appear here today. I have a promise to my engineering friends, I practice law, I don't practice engineering, and I ask them to do the same. So I'm not in a position to discuss with you all the nuances of the plans that have been put forth by Mr. Carroll. I think everybody would be best served if we allowed this hearing to be continued until a later date.
Thank you.
I don't know if you all want me to say anything else at this point or not.
Do we need to, I mean, if we're just continuing, do we really want to, I mean, we have public participation part of the agenda.
Yeah, there is public participation part of the agenda, but I think you heard the applicant accept the recommendation and would prefer to present their, with their engineer and their experts at at the continued hearing rather than right now. There are individuals here, there is a public participation, but hopefully everyone would understand that this is, the the body of this case, if you vote to continue it, will be picked back up, re-noticed, and and off at a later time.
And we would like to, for the city to facilitate a meeting between the applicant and and the interested neighbors during that, during that time.
All right, do I have a motion to continue on this item?
If I may briefly address the city planning board, simply on behalf of the amount of time that you wish to.
Sorry, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Meredith Bush, counsel for Harvey Hollingsworth. My address is three one four South Bayland Street, Pensacola, Florida, three two five zero two. So we filed the, a written motion to continue along with several other pleadings and a memorandum. We would agree and appreciate the fact that the yacht club is willing to continue and that the city wants to facilitate discussions. Our motion requested a minimum of sixty days for the delay, given the holidays, given the need for meetings, given the fact that we've also filed a public records request and need time to review the documents, which it was all submitted today, so those have not yet been provided. We would ask for the February date.
I think we need to yield to the applicant on that question.
Good afternoon. My name is Douglas Sale, three sixteen Bunkers Cove Road, and I rise today as a merely a neighbor and also a member of the yacht club. I did not stand to be sworn because I don't intend to present any evidence today. What I do intend to do is follow up on something Mr. Fuller said about giving an opportunity for the club to reach an agreement with these neighbors. Gentlemen, that's not going to happen. And I rise now to tell you that this is an opportunity, we have an opportunity here with competent counsel representing Mr. Hollingsworth, who is a knowledgeable businessman, and competent board members at the yacht club, to take their positions and have the final decision of what has been grandfathered at that yacht club and what is allowable under the special historical nonconforming conditions. These folks need a referee, and unhappily, you folks are that referee. And you're looking at a real honest to God adversarial hearing, quasi judicial hearing, like a court. It could go on for hours and hours and hours. And so my plea to you, as someone who has been involved in this issue for over twenty years, who wrote the nonconforming historical language, my plea to you is to consider this board asking the city to appoint a special magistrate to hear this case between knowledgeable lawyers and real fact witnesses and make you a recommendation, so you five for, ultimately five, will not have to sit here and try to make a decision that in the end only a judge can make. I fear that if you make the decision based on whatever, that we'll end up in front of a judge, and it'll be two years from now before we have a decision. Now, that's why I rose, point one. Point two, in case you don't have a magistrate and you decide to take this on yourselves, then I must ask each of you again to revisit your disclosures. In my humble opinion, it is not sufficient to merely disclose that you were contacted. I I ask you to disclose who contacted you and what they said. The reason I do that is I have only glanced through the papers filed with you today, but I am impressed that Mr. Hollingsworth has hired knowledgeable, well versed counsel who is going to be able to help us reach a solution of this if we have not a mediator but a, someone who can hear this case and give you a report. So I I don't want, at the end of the day, for further delay to be occasioned by very competent but aggressive counsel, and I don't know how aggressive she is, I just met her, but very, very aggressive, she says again. I would expect a very aggressive counsel to say that. I don't want her to throw this whole thing into a cocked hat because you didn't say who talked to you and what they told you. You see, as the story goes, if someone said, if you have a petition before you, it's over an environmental issue, and the the applicant says it, it's it's just an Osprey, but in fact, it's a bald eagle, and someone calls up and tells you it's not a bald eagle, it's an Osprey, you got to say who called you, and you got to say what they said, or otherwise the other side can't figure out how they're supposed to respond to it. And that's just the way it is, and I know that's a pain in the rear, but in a tough, tough case where there's going to be an argument, anyway, you need to disclose it, and I ask you to please do that, so we don't have a deficiency in this record, starting at day one.
Thank you. The applicant like to address the.
I'm, under the circumstances, let me, I guess, kind of echo two points. One, to Doug's, Mr. Sale's contention. One, to Doug's, Mr. Sale's contention about having the city appoint a special master, again, I think that's well-taken. I believe, as those familiar with the situation know, there is one man who has been retained by the city previously, who carried a lot of that load, a man by the name of Mr. David Theriak. I would recommend and ask that the planning board and the city consider re-engaging Mr. Theriak to finish the job that started in 2018, in 2019. To the contention of counsel, that we may need 60 days, I understand that. I don't want, it has never been the intention of the yacht club or of its board to rush this process, to try and do anything with less than disclosure. We want to be good neighbors, we want to be a great member of this community, and that comes through transparency and open dialogue. And so if the request is for 60 days in order to be able to do that efficiently, I don't see any reason in fighting for 30 days over whether or not we're going to add an additional 30 days. I'd prefer to do this via consent. So if the request is 60 days to be moved to February, we have no, I would have no objection to that as the applicant. Thank you.
So one last thing, in the colloquial, in the colloquialism, I should have added at the end of this... In the colloquialism, I should have added at the end of this, what I mean by, these parties aren't going to ever agree, is they need a referee. If you guys want to be the referee, okay. But I'd ask you to consider having somebody else who is well, well-versed in local government land development, land regulations, to be the referee. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a request to table item for 60 days to the February meeting, and the applicant has concurred, do I have a motion?
Is 60 days sufficient?
We can always take, continue to begin at that time.
Yeah, I wonder if we need more, so...
We can always continue at that time, so...
Okay.
There's a little further guidance, I guess. We've heard a request for a special magistrate. I would like to look into that and then I can bring you back a report in January as far as a special magistrate and we could, because I do believe it would take action by this commission to actually set that up, but you'd need to know who it is, how it works, things like that. So that's, that's what, so at least 60 days sounds very appropriate.
The one thing I would say in response to that regarding the magistrate, there's a provision in Florida statutes 70.51 that is an alternative dispute resolution for land use cases. This commission, it's my understanding and belief based on my experience, wouldn't have the authority to order the parties to engage in that. However, part of our request in the memorandum expressed a willingness to engage in that. So I believe we very well could, if we can come to an agreement to do so, engage a special magistrate and begin that process. I don't know that it would be completed within 60 days, but of course, we're happy to attend a status conference in 60 days. We'd also be willing to come back in January if the only purpose of January is to discuss and update on that process, understanding that we would not be prepared at that time, given all the things previously mentioned, to proceed with the hearing.
Thank you.
I will make one other comment. This has to do with Mr. Sale's comments as far as disclosures go. The purpose of giving a general notice that, yes, you have talked to somebody. There's no obligation to initially say exactly what was discussed or anything, but it does put people on notice that there were ex parte communications also, and that there is an opportunity for someone to inquire further about that. I believe firstly that it's premature to, I don't know that Mr. Sale, he wasn't sworn, so I don't know that he's really asking you in his, in some particular capacity to disclose exactly who you talked to, what you talked about at this time. Obviously, at some appropriate time, that would be, that would be done. But I don't know if anyone else out there is really asking for some further particular disclosure. So I would give the advice that, that yes, you gave some general disclosures. I think everyone knows that, yes, you have talked to other people about this, people that are on the board, obviously, of the yacht club have information about this. At the appropriate time, I believe the disclosures would come out. This is not, even though this is noticed as a hearing, I don't believe we're going to have a full evidentiary hearing at this meeting. And whether or not you're going to rely on the information that you heard outside this meeting, you don't know because you haven't heard what the presentation is. So that's my take on it. But of course, if, but I just wanted to be able to...
I withdraw my request.
Okay. Mr. Sale withdraws his request, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to table the meeting to the February 9th?
Yes, yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to push a continuance to at least the February meeting for agenda item B.
I'll second that request.
A motion second, please take roll.
Board Member Stamps?
Yes.
Board Member Barker?
Yes.
Board Member Rich?
Yes.
Chairman Newbauer?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you. No non-actionized, this brings us to the audience participation portion of our agenda. Does anyone wish to make any comments on this, any items? Go to the order. Seeing none, means adjourned.